Hey, Bill.
Hey, Ron. I made it this time.
Thank you. Awesome. What happened last month?
I completely forgot.
Oh, yeah.
I was home. I think I was watching TV. I looked at my watch. It was 7:30, 8 o'clock and I'm thinking, wait a minute, something's missing.
That happens in these times when all the days run together.
Oh, God. Crazy. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Are you still virtual, Ron? Is that a virtual picture again?
Well, this is actually my screen I'm sharing. But yes, I'm in my basement.
There you go.
Raj, John Schumow checking in.
Hey, John. How are you?
Nice basement you have.
Mike.
Mike, how you doing?
What? Hi.
Hey.
Art Weber's sitting next to me. He's checking in.
Is he going to be able to vote with a thumbs up on your camera?
I got my wife's here.
You're gonna have to turn the computer so we can see his vote.
Yep. I was using my wife's iPad.
Hey, if you're closer than six feet, you're supposed to be wearing a mask, you know.
Yeah.
I don't want no shenanigans over there. Hi, Rita.
Loading. Where's your email?
Here, Rita. I can't hear you.
How's that?
Better. Oh, Joe, you're frozen.
That's your right pet, right?
Hello.
Hi, BJ.
Hi. Oh.
We have good audio this time. That's good.
Yeah, I'm surprised. I'm delighted. Matter of fact, thank you. It always surprises me when it works.
It's always, yeah, it's hit and miss.
So, Art, why don't you sit near the...
You guys, John and Art, you're gonna have to turn off the speakers to one of those devices you got going.
Okay, I'll turn mine off.
Hey, Ron, can you see me? It's Mike.
I can see you, and I see the nice sunset in the background.
Oh, good. Good.
Art's going into the other room.
Is he showing up as your wife's name, John?
Yes, Martha.
All right, I'm gonna promote him then. We're gonna talk.
Okay. Should be good.
See, I got my special shirt on for you guys.
Is Art on board, hon?
I don't see Paul. I want Peter.
Hey, Bill.
Art got a job at the Mayo Clinic, apparently.
Guess what? You end up getting any prescription drugs from the place, buddy. Ron, what do you think? I'll go back to actually sitting in the chambers.
I was gonna let Paul talk about that. I don't know if he wants to talk about it during the meeting, or maybe we can do it offline afterwards. I guess the question is, what benefit do we get as a board from meeting in the chambers when the public can't be there anyway, and the applicants can't be there? So I think we just need to figure out whether there's a benefit to meeting in person. And if so, we can do that, like the council has done. And if we don't think it's worth the trouble, then we can just keep doing it this way.
Well, I think the governor's slowly expanding the number of people that can be together.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing. We're not sure where we'll be come August.
Okay. Part of the problem, too, is even though the number of people is going up, you still have to socially distance, and there's only so many people that can fit in the room.
Right.
Once you spread them out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Paul.
Hey, Paul.
I'm gonna have to hold off for just a minute to let my dog in, so give me a minute.
All right. Didn't we have this problem last time?
If we meet in the council chambers, you'll miss all that.
Thank you. Thanks much. This is great. Plus, I have to see him.
Yeah. Hope everybody's here, so as soon as Paul gets back, we can get started.
See here. Just press that.
Okay.
Sometimes it's better just to keep muted, and then when you wanna talk unmute.
Okay, are we all set?
I think we're ready to go. If you want to start by calling the roll.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the delay. This meeting will come to order. Start by calling the roll. Mr. Perrick. Mr. Perrick? I can see your picture, Joe. Do you have your audio on?
Yeah, I'm having difficulties.
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly, Paul.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Yeah, I mean, I have no screen showing anybody else or anything, but I can hear you perfectly, and I'm here. I've been here for 15 minutes trying to get this thing to work. Something happened to my laptop, and it's a little challenging right now.
All right, well, if you...
But I'm present, and I have all my materials handy, so.
Okay, just yell out if you have a question.
You bet.
Mr. Schumow.
Present.
Mrs. Owen.
Yeah.
Glad you made it, BJ.
Yes, thank you, Paul.
Mr. Weber.
Present.
Mr. Fenton.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Present.
And I am present. This is a regular meeting of the planning board conducted over Zoom, so that please identify yourself when you make a motion or when you second a motion, and all of the votes will be taken by roll call. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of June 10th. They have a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Who made the motion?
BJ.
Thank you.
Bill Nash, second.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 10th meeting. Is there any discussion or recommended changes? I will call the roll on the motion. If you are in favor, say aye. If you are opposed, say nay. Mr. Perrick.
Aye.
Mr. Schumow.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber. Mr. Weber.
I'm muted.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The minutes are approved.
Aye.
Yes, I finally heard you. In the beginning, I had difficulty.
Thank you.
There is no correspondence to receive, so the next item are the continuances. Ron, are there any attorneys present to present these, or should we just proceed with them?
You can proceed. I don't see either of the attorneys online.
Okay, the first item to be continued is item 4A, a public hearing, application of Jack Gullison for development plan review, including request for waivers from certain design standards of the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivisions in development of land, Section 521, for construction of a new commercial building to include an 18-room hotel with a restaurant and associated site work located on property identified as 59 Equidneck Avenue, assesses plat 115 SE, lot 169. May I have a motion to continue this to the August 12th meeting?
So moved.
Joe.
Second.
I think the motion was made by BJ. Who seconded the motion?
Art.
Art seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? All those, I'm sorry. Mr. Perrick.
Aye.
Mr. Schumow.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The item 4A is continued to the August 12th meeting. The next item to be continued is item 4B, a public hearing, request of James Paradise, owner of property at 170 Equidneck Avenue, plat 115 SE, lots 145, 146, 147, for waiver of development plan review pursuant to Section 908 of the Middletown Rules and Regulations Regarding the Subdivision and Development of Land. May I have a motion to continue this item?
So moved. BJ.
Bill Nash, second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can you identify precisely where that is on Equidneck Avenue? What's it next to or near?
It's an office.
Been trying to find.
Yeah, it's an office building roughly right at the intersection with Valley Road, Valley and Equidneck. If you, right past that.
Okay, see, right. That's the one where they have the acupuncture guy and all that.
I'm not sure who's in there now, but they wanted...
Paradise Cleaning is in there.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Mr. Perrick.
Aye.
Mr. Schumow.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item 4B is continued to the August 12th meeting. Next item is item 5A, a public hearing, request of Boulevard Nurseries, Inc., owner of property at 5 East Main Road, plat 107 SE, lot 105, for waiver from certain design requirements of Section 521 of the Middletown Rules and Regulations Regarding the Subdivision and Development of Land to allow renovation of an existing commercial building using synthetic exterior building materials. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Bill Nash, so moved.
Second from Art.
Motion's made and seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Mr. Perrick.
I'm in favor of opening the hearing on it.
Mr. Schumow.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
I vote aye. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone to speak on this, Ron?
Yes, Attorney Mart Lynd is online, as well as the architect. Dave, do you have others that you want to be able to speak during the discussion?
No, I think just Dan is probably necessary. Sam Bradner may also be.
He is. Yes, he's in the room. Do you want me to unmute him?
Yes, if you could.
And there's someone named Kelly.
I'm not sure who that is.
Okay.
Mr. Wilansky, this is Sam Bradner. She's just part of our architecture team, so she can just listen.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Sure.
So who will speak for the applicant?
Well, just briefly, this is part of a...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. For the record, David Martland.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to be with you remotely. So this is an application by Boulevard Nurseries, which owns the property located at the two-mile corner that encompasses where the old Rite Aid was. And they're looking to do a renovation to that, to the exterior, in connection with the addition of a new tenant that will be a bank that is gonna be going in. We had received approval back in, I think it was February, from the zoning board to allow for a drive-through lane. And so the plans have now progressed to the point where the client's ready to move forward with this redevelopment. They've got plans that have been put together by the architect, but part of it requires a waiver for the use of synthetic building materials. So I think what I'd like to do is turn that over to Dan and allow him to discuss the design of the building and the materials that are gonna be used.
Yes, good evening. This is Dan Herkenrother from Herk Works Architecture.
Dan, before you get started, I'm gonna share my screen with the renderings on it.
Okay.
Just so you have something to reference.
Yeah, I can also...
Go ahead. So, Ron, you mailed us those renderings as well, correct?
Right.
These are the ones?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, Dan, you can just tell me to flip. I put just the renderings, not the elevation. So I think just this file should show what we need to see.
Yeah, this will be great. Yeah, so this shows most of what we want to do. Obviously, the existing space is the top image. That's the Rite Aid space, which was all those, all four bays were Rite Aid. And the idea is to remove that overhang of the vertical metal siding. We're gonna remove that and put on a new front facade to the space. The image below is the same view, but showing the new proposed front face of the building. And the idea was to increase some sinus exposure and to freshen the look with some updated materials. Also looking just to upgrade the overall building. There's some issues with just the building being a bit old and tired. Most of the materials you're looking at on the front of the building is gonna be what's called a fiber cement clapboard product. This is the same product that was used at Wendy's and the same product that we had approved at Ocean Point Church. So at this page, if you look at FC2 and FC1, of the fiber cement siding, it's made to look just like clapboard siding. Ron, you can go back to the second page now.
This one?
Keep going. That's a good one there. Yeah, so this shows the side of the building. We're gonna keep the brick but possibly paint it. the side of the building. We're going to keep the brick, but possibly paint it a darker color of the brick. And the grout joints need some work. So it'll either be a repaint or a repointing, regrouting. We'll keep the existing brick on the side. And again, the front is fiber cement. There'll be some inundized aluminum for the window and doors, and also some of the canopies.
Just a reminder for the board, this is one of these, that we've had several of recently, where the applicant is simply seeking a waiver. It's not a full development plan review. So you'll just be considering the waiver for the proposed materials.
Are you finished with your presentation?
Yeah, Ron, just flip to page three and four real quickly, just to show some alternate views of the front. Another front view, and the space on the far right that's brick, that's currently the FedEx space, which is occupied. So there is no work being done to that front facade. We might remove part of the roof, but the brick will remain on that front right side. And the idea is this will be split up between three separate tenants. FedEx will be the far right space. A bank is going in the far left space, and the middle white section with the three windows and doors, that'll be a third tenant space. There's no tenant for that right now.
Ron, please. Is there any comments from members of the board?
Yes, Art has a comment.
Mr. Weber.
We seem to be in a consistent series of applications that propose probably the ugliest buildings I have ever seen. Ocean Point Church being one of them. And every time we do this, it's the same exercise. We're getting something that might look good in Prescott, Arizona, but this particular area used to be part of the town center. And I think we should make an effort to come up with something that looks like we actually live in New England. And I just don't understand why every time we're getting something that's flashy and modern and everything else, particularly in high-traffic areas that people see all the time. If this is going to be a bank, the model I would use is the bank that's down by BJ's, which actually looks like a building that might have existed in New England some time ago. So I just got a little frustrated that we have to go through this every time, and the results to me are unsatisfactory.
Any other comments? Mr. Nash.
Yeah, Art, I agree with you. You know, as I look at the renderings, you know, you represent that the board is hardy plank or it's a fibrous material made to look like clapboards. But I don't see any representation of what a clapboard looks like. If it were clapboard, if the facade were done in a clapboard manner, then I'd be a little bit easier with it. But to represent that it's a I just lost it. To represent that it's, you know, a fibrous clapboard like material is false. It's no, there's no clapboard whatsoever there. It may, it could be made to look like clapboard. So that's how I feel on that. And the other question I have is, and I know it's only a waiver for materials, but as you look at the rendering, the existing, where the drive-through is going to be, is there any equipment up on the roof that might be needed to be shielded? You know, I believe there are some pretty heavy units up on that roof, that flat roof. And the pictures look great, but there's really, you know, if you had the existing picture that showed the side, I bet you'd see that there's equipment up there that frankly I like to hide as well. So, I mean, I know it's only a waiver of materials, and I, you know, I guess I would support that, but frankly, I agree with Art on the clapboard rendering, lack thereof, and also the hiding of any equipment up on the facade. That would make me feel better. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the board?
I agree. I'd like to just say that I would agree totally with both Art and with Bill. And it does seem a shame that we can't have something more in New England. I mean, especially seeing we have so many banks in that area already.
If I could just respond to the comments, you know, this isn't a situation where we're going from the ground up. So I think, you know, the board, you know, needs to recognize that this is dealing with a refacing of a portion of the building. We've got an existing building that's being reutilized for a different tenant now. And so the architect is working within those confines and is looking at ways to sort of refurbish that building. We're not tearing any of the building down, other than removing that front overhang that's all made out of that metal sheeting. And the the balance of the building is remaining in place. So we're not here on a development plan review where we wouldn't be looking at those issues if we were, you know, creating a new structure. And we would be able to make that fit within the confines probably of something more in tune with the New England type of architecture. But we've got an existing building that was probably built in, I don't know, the 1950s that, you know, it is what it is. And we're trying to simply reface this and freshen it up. This isn't a full redevelopment of the site involving the tear-down and the demolition. But I would let, I would like the architect to respond to the issue of the whether or not these are clavber being utilized. I think one of the sheets, one of the cut sheets shows the size of those boards.
And hey, it's Joe Pyrick. Hey, Dave, when you're done and the architect's done, I have a recommendation and a comment, so.
Oh, great.
Would love to jump in at the appropriate time here.
I can put that spec sheet back up on the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys see that?
Yeah, thank you. I can see it, Ron.
So Dan, were you going to respond to the comments?
Oh, I thought there was a question from one of the board members.
Well, he was going to wait.
Yeah, I'm going to wait. Why don't you go for it, and then I'll jump back in and answer what Dave was talking about.
I got you. So it looks like we have we have two options here, is that you're suggesting that you like the bank across from BJ's, which I believe is a has a couple pitched roofs on it and mostly brick on the front. That was a brand-new building, so we do have some constraints here that we're dealing with existing footprint, and it's a rather large flat-roof building. So we really couldn't add too many pitched roofs to this building because it's already existing as a large rectangular flat-roof building. So from my, from what I'm hearing here, is you'd like to see something with a bit more of that material, or we would change this fiber cement product to wood clapboard product? Which would then be a traditional material?
So I.
Hold off, Bill. Hold off. Mike Fenton had his hand up. I give the floor to Mike.
I'll put my hand up, thank you.
Yeah. So I agree with Art there. The location of the building is, you know, right in the middle of town there, and it's, you know, it kind of gives a lot of people passing by, you know, in traffic, you know, an indication of what our town looks like. And you know, I understand that, you know, like they say, it's, we're just voting on a waiver. But I, you know, again, I want to say the same thing that they said. It's too bad that they couldn't have done something like like was suggested, you know, like maybe shield the utilities on the roof, that long side that's just clapboard. Maybe they could put a little more something in there to dress it up, and maybe some landscaping in the front. That would have been great, too, but that's, I know that's not part of what we're voting on, but those things would have been nice. That's all I have.
Joe, and then Bill.
Yeah, so it's Joe Pyrick, and my comments, Dave, I get it. It's an existing building, and you're here for a waiver on materials. However, looking at, and I'm looking at one of the renderings here that shows the existing building the way it currently is, and then down below, you've got tenants, kind of a tower, tenant space on the east side of the building, which is a large, almost column block space. And then you migrate to the west, and you've got another block kind of protrusion on the storefront elevation that says tenant on that. And then the next space is the FedEx space. But I think what we're saying is, you know, you're making some pretty radical changes to the front, notwithstanding the fact that you have that sloped roof behind. And I think if one were to look at a way to soften it, so it doesn't look like these columns, and it looks a little bit more traditional in addition to the materials, I think that's kind of the direction that I'm sensing from the other board members. And I don't think that's a heavy lift. Instead of having those those columns and those blocks, one on the eastern side and one almost on that separation between the new facade and FedEx, I think there's something you could do to soften that a little bit, so it doesn't look like two column spaces or a new because you're creating two new columns that don't exist there today. So to say, you know, we're working with the existing structure, yeah, you are, but with those two new tent, where it says tenant, those are two new spaces you're creating. So I think we could do something a little bit more creative with that, and then blend in the materials as was suggested by the other board members. I have a page here that shows on one of the materials that you gave. It's called a simplified canopy, and it's got some stone material on there. And this is on a products page next to FC2 and FC1. And I mean, if you had some of that stone at the bottom, it starts to break up that big continuous storefront and gives it a little bit more of a more earthy, warm feeling to it. Rather than this, you know, I mean, it's got some different colors there, and it shows like for different tenants, but if you had maybe going up halfway, or maybe to the top of the windows, that stone, it's a manufactured stone product, you know, in certain spots, I think that would also go a long way to addressing the other members' concerns and softening that up. And you show the product on your materials samples example here. So I know we use it a lot commercially, and it's, you know, it's readily available, and it's not that expensive. That's all I have.
Mr. Nash.
Thank you. So just before I, I'd like to go back to the clapboard, but I'd like to maybe ask the applicant, and, you know, I guess Pete chiming in here. I know we're just looking at materials, but, you know, the door's open. You know, if they would consider doing something, then I'd like to at least ask. That long facade that we keep alluding to, the east side, I guess, where the drive-through is, is there equipment up there now that can be seen? I don't know, to be honest, but if in fact there is, I'd like you to consider shielding it in some capacity. Just my, and I think the board would feel better with some type of shielding, which would then make me a little softer on the material granting waiver. And respectfully, Dave Martland and Dan, you know, it is, you said it was a 1950s building, so, I mean, it's not historic, but it is a 1950s, rather large, commercial building, yes, but it does have a pitched roof. It does have brick. You know, a little bit of clapboard would go a long way, along with stone, as Joe suggested, to, you know, keep it in the traditional manner. What you're really doing here honestly is taking a 1950s-ish building and making it a modern-looking space-age-type building, almost like the BMW building that I was so much opposed to that, you know, again, is going to happen anyway. And this may very well happen as well. So I don't want to beat it to death, but at the same time, if you're inclined to, number one, look at the possibilities of covering that east side, any equipment that's up there, and number two, go back to a more traditional clapboard slash stone appearance, as we've been talking about.
Ron, could we go back to the group view? Are there any other comments from members of the board? I'd like to make my comments. I have to agree with everything that's being said. I understand that we are looking at a waiver on materials only, but I think it's a real shame that the architect and their attorney representing them have not taken this opportunity to understand what our comprehensive plan is calling for and making buildings look like Middletown buildings. I would like to first request the applicant to see if they would be willing to do a redesign. Willingly, willingly. I understand it's not required.
We usually, what usually happens is we gather your input, and then I will take the revised renderings to show the owners and clients. Joseph's comments were really helpful about changing the towers with a different roof pitch up possibly. So, and also, any mechanical screening would be taken into account. So I'd be happy to look at some of these updated changes and share it with the owner and clients of the building, and make sure they're okay, and then happy to present back to the board.
Well, I think if you're willing to do that, I think the screening is a requirement. Would you also be willing to discuss a more suitable design?
Well, why don't we, I think we've certainly heard the board's concerns. So at this point, what I would suggest is that we continue the matter a month. So to give us an opportunity to speak with the consultants, as well as the client and the potential tenant for this site. There are a number of different parties that are involved here. You know, it's not just, you know, Dan and I just don't, you know, come up with ideas to board. You know, there are a number of parties that are involved with this process, so there are substantial consultations that need to take place. So I think, you know, we've heard what the board has had to say, and we really do appreciate the time and your input relative to this. And we will take those comments back to the consultants, client, respective tenant, and see if we can accommodate the concerns that were raised. And, you know, we will be back next meeting.
That would be much appreciated, much appreciated. This is Mr. Weber.
David, I really appreciate that approach. And what we've done in the past, if you've got some ideas that can be put together between now and next month, and get them into the planning office, we can stop by and take a look and see if we think you're on track. And I really appreciate this approach. I think it's terrific.
Okay, we will try to do that as quickly as we can, so we can hopefully get some initial feedback and hopefully heading in the right direction.
John, did you have a comment?
John Chumo, did you have a comment?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
To echo what has been said, it seems like we go through this procedure, this dance, every time a new building is proposed or redo of a new building. Do any of the architects look at the comprehensive plan and try to understand what we're trying to do in Middletown? It seems like we always have to start at the bottom of the ladder and move forward.
Any other comments from members of the planning board? Mr. Nash.
Yeah, while we're on this, and I'll bring up another item that I know, again, not purview, but if you're willing to go this far, I'll just suggest at the drive-through, I'm assuming you drive up ATM, whatever it is, you know, you've got people in the rendering standing there. I'm assuming it's not a straight shot out, that there's some curbing in there. That might be a nice place to put some plantings, you know, some greenery. That might be a nice place to put some plantings, you know, some, some greenery. You know, obviously, you know, it's not going to be a straight shot right to the door where the entrance, one of the entrances is. But, you know, maybe a nice place to put some, some landscaping, like BJ suggested, would also, I think, add to what we're asking.
Since this is a public hearing and the item is going to be continued, should we keep the public hearing open?
Yes, actually, before you continue, but I would ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak at this point?
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this point?
If you wish to speak and you're in the audience, please raise your hand using the Zoom app. I see no hands raised.
Okay.
Motion to continue.
Bill Nash made the motion to continue, and I think it was BJ who seconded it?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Before I take the vote, I would like to request the town planner to put an item on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss the requirements that trigger a development plan review. I think based on this discussion, I think the planning board should reexamine those requirements to see if we think they should be changed. Are we ready for the vote to continue? Mr. Peric?
Aye.
Mr. Trumo?
Aye.
Mrs. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Fenton?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
I'm going to vote aye with thanks to Dave and Dan for your considerations.
And I vote aye and again, express my appreciation for your reconsideration. The motion is continued to the August 12th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Give me one second here. The next item is the capital improvement plan, fiscal year 2021 to 2025 capital improvement program. Request for review regarding consistency with the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan. Is there any, members of the planning board? No discussion. I have some comments. First of all, I would like to mention that I appreciate getting the summary document that you distributed, Ron.
Sure.
But I would like to request that you continue to distribute the project description sheets digitally so that you don't have to generate a whole lot of paper. But I find those project descriptions to be helpful. So please continue to distribute the project description sheets. The summary sheet is a great assistance.
Sure.
I do have another question. Last year at this time, I put forth an item to suggest putting screening, rooftop screening on all of the town buildings that don't have it to be consistent with other projects in the town. When I looked through the project descriptions, I saw none of that. And so I have a question. I lost my little note. Hold on a second. Here it is. If you look at item 181-2017-074, it has to do with the repair and replacement of ventilation systems on the high school, the middle school and Quidnick Avenue school or building. Could not a small amount of money be added to that for screening? Especially since they're going to be dealing with the very equipment that needs to be screened.
Are you asking, that, that would be a, yeah.
First of all, procedurally, can, can the project description, the entry be modified to include that?
You cannot change the entry.
No, I know I can't. Can a request be made?
This is a request of the school department for that, for that project. Somehow that were, your request, if, or if the board is interested in sending a request, you would have to send that request either to the school committee or the school administration to ask them to revise their request.
Could you draft such a document for me, Ron? Make it brief.
Well, I think we need to understand if the board wants to do something like that.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is the board in favor of that? Can I get a consensus?
Yep.
I see.
I am.
You have a consensus. Could you draft something for me, Ron?
Sure.
Thank you. It may also apply to item 181-2020-003, which has to do with air conditioning at Aquidnick and Forest. I don't know if those are just room units or more, more extensive. So I'm not sure whether it applies there or not.
Well, it can be, the memo can just be a general request that any rooftop HVAC equipment be screened.
Very good. Can we, can we reference those two items though, Ron?
Sure.
Thank you. Given that you will, now procedurally, can you send that to me and, and we can get that off quickly? Will that get included in the current consideration of this, these items?
It's going to go to the school department and then they'll consider it. I guess if you wanted to have your concerns also brought to the attention of the town council, we could copy that on the memo.
I think it would be good to copy the town administrator as well as the town council members.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we're, we're voting on the consistency of these items with the comprehensive plan. May I have a motion exclaiming that we find these items to be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, seconded by John Trumo. Is there any discussion? Mr. Peric?
Aye.
Mr. Trumo?
Aye.
Mrs. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Fenton?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next item are updates, the status report on board items. Item 6A, does anybody have any comments? Mr. Weber?
I'd like to come down to number three. One of the things I've been thinking about for a long time is affordable housing. And some ways to finally get out of talking about it and getting it done. And I think the misuse ordinance gives us some new opportunities to do maybe some of those particular affordable housing units for one of the groups, either be economically deprived workforce or people of our age, quantologically challenged. So I would hope that somebody can put a sense of urgency in the council to go through this thing and, and discuss it and approve it. And then we would have that tool prepared and ready if opportunities arise, maybe on West Main Road or in the property behind Secoochee, et cetera, where we could maybe look at some opportunities for affordable house.
Thank you. Other comments? I would just like to mention a couple of things. I would like to note that item one on the Atlantic Beach District zoning overlay, that has been updated in the sense that the recommendations of the planning board and our draft documents have been sent to the town council for their consideration. It is now before them.
And on Monday night, they received that and on the consent calendar, it has been ordered advertised. So I'll let you know when that's actually going to be heard by the town council.
Very good, yes. Also, item nine has, is updated. That has to do with the landscape maintenance plan that was approved at the last meeting and at this last town council meeting, they did something else, Ron. What did they do at this last meeting?
What happened was they, they neglected to take the formal vote at the last meeting to actually approve it. I believe they only voted to receive it. So it was on consent this past Monday, just to have them formally approve the amendments, which
So this is now, this is now an active ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. And I'm, I'm just, one other thing, I just wanted to ask Peter if there's any update on marijuana.
Peter, you're muted.
Peter, we can't hear you.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry about that. I am scheduled to speak with Dwight later this week to sort of get back on track with revisions to the draft ordinance in light of the revised regulations that were adopted by the Department of Health and DBR before the pandemic hit. So I'll have a sort of an ETA on when we would expect those changes to be completed that I can pass along to John Trumo. And, and then perhaps be in a position to schedule a meeting of a subcommittee.
Very good, very good.
Thank you, Peter.
And my last comment has to do with number 16, the West Main Conneken Development Center. Is there any update on the status of reissuing that, Ron?
I think we're going to have to have some discussion. I talked with the consultant actually this morning about his, to get his thoughts on how we should proceed. And he was trying to get back with some of the developers that he sent the RFI to to determine, you know, what the issue was, why they didn't respond. Was it a lack of interest? And the sense that we're getting is that our timing was just terrible, not that it was our fault, but with COVID hitting at the same time, the RFI went out, that, that really impacted, I think, the interest level. So I think we need to talk, probably Sean and I with the town council to decide whether we sort of put it on hold for a bit until things settle down and maybe reissue the RFI. You know, again, the, the whole goal with that effort was to try to get some input from potential developers, give us some ideas for what could happen on that property. And we received just one response. So yeah, I think we need to get some input from the council to see what they want to do.
Okay, very good. Are there any committee reports to be made? Are any of the committees active right now?
Yeah, I'm dying to meet again the used table, just dying, guys. Let's get going. Let's open this world up. Let's go.
But, yes, BJ?
Yeah, I did hear from Karen Day. And Karen said that they had their first meeting. I could not go. I had another type of Zoom meeting with Wheaton College at that, that time. And she did get back to me and said that they just got caught up because it was the first meeting they've had since February. So they've had no time to really coordinate. So she, she is working on that.
Very good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? The only scheduled meeting we have right now is our next regular meeting on August 12th. Ron, do you anticipate that that would be an in-person meeting or will that still be a Zoom meeting?
Well, before you get on tonight, I mentioned Art asked the same question. I mentioned I talked with you a little bit about, you know, what's needing to think about whether it's you know, the best move to, to meet in person. The question would be, you know, is there any benefit to having the board show up at the town hall, knowing that in all likelihood, applicants and the public still are not going to be able to attend? I think the board, maybe we can just ask board members now not to, not to give us an answer now, but to think about over the next few days. And then we can maybe just by email, poll everybody to see what they think. If there's a benefit to the board meeting in person, similar to what the town council has done with their last couple of meetings. You know, I guess it's, it's, it's nice to be in the room together. On the other hand, there, there's still a virus out there and, you know, unnecessary exposure is maybe something you would want to think about.
Yeah.
So yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah, well, I know we've tabled some items until the meetings are open so that we could bring members of the public in and get their input. But if they're not going to show up, it doesn't help to do that. So I, I don't know that it's worth doing that. On the other hand, what about something like Bill's Use Committee? Is it possible that they could meet?
I, yeah, I don't see why not. I, I think we are, you know, very gradually trying to ramp things back up. I've just, talking with the chairman of the Economic Development Committee, we've decided that we're going to go ahead with their first meeting virtually on Zoom since, since this all started. So I, yeah, I think maybe, you know, I can communicate with Bill afterwards about trying to schedule the next meeting of that used table subcommittee.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, that would, those subcommittee meetings would need to be on Zoom because members of, it's, it needs to, it's still an open meeting and even though it's not a public hearing. And so members of the public need to be able to watch it. So if they, if they wish to, so.
Well, I leave it up to, to you, Bill, to talk it over with Ron and see what you want to do.
I do. I have a question, but I know Art had his hand up, I defer to Art.
My comment is, I, I understand why we have to do this and I, I agree with it. But I think what the reality is, it really limits the public's ability to, to interact with us, which is extremely important. And I think a lot of people look at getting into Zoom, it's too complicated, it's too hard and things like that. And I think one of the joys of working on the planning board and in most things in town, we've been open so that folks are comfortable to come in and talk about issues that are important to them, whether they like, you know, they, it's a positive or negative approach. So I know we're stuck here for a while, but I, I'm like everybody else anxious to get back to a place where we have real people sitting in a real place, listening to the issues that impact them and the town.
So, you know, I'm not just kind of piggyback on that. Peter, I noticed, is this a Middletown thing or, I mean, I see Newport City Hall, Newport City Council is meeting and they, you know, there are a huge bunch of restrictions relative to having people in the audience and
Newport City Hall is still closed. I've attended a couple of city council meetings, those were held via Zoom. I've attended the, you know, obviously Middletown Town Council meetings where the council and staff are in the council chambers, but no members of the public are in and all the members of the public are, are either calling in or attending via Zoom. So I, I've been in a lot of these meetings in both formats. And, you know, I, I don't really see a discernible difference. The main, the main difference is the public is not able to be in front of the board or in front of the council and other than via video or on the phone.
I, I actually think I read a story today that Newport City Council is, is making arrangements for them to have dividers at the dais and allowing for public hearing. I, I believe there was a story in, in the news somewhere today or more recently that there's, they're, they're going to be doing that. And frankly, you know, we have, we have, you know, our, our budget hearings are coming up and, you know, if, you know, planning and zoning is one thing, but I got to tell you, if we're going to try to do our, our budget that way. So my point is, is I think that's heading in a direction of having this happen.
Yeah, part of the, and, and what Newport may be doing is, is actually having a meeting with the council members in the chamber, but not the members of the public. Because once again, the other thing, if, if you look at our council chambers, once the council is in there and the staff and everyone is appropriately spread out, there is no more room left in the chambers for members of the public to come in. So with regard to budget hearings, they may be taking place at Gaudet or some larger facility where you can have members of the public and still observe social distancing. So it's not just the allowing people in the building or the number of people, it's having a space that's big enough to accommodate everyone. So, I mean, but right now, most of the cities and towns, at least in this area, you know, most of the zoning boards, planning boards, most of the substantive work is being continued and it's really the housekeeping and summary sort of items that are being dealt with.
I, I, I thank you, Peter. But I, I sense that sooner rather than later, we'll be looking at meetings, maybe not August, September, but certainly in that vicinity, I'm thinking with schools going back in some capacity, finding a bigger venue might be where we're going to be to, to get some real business done. going to be to, to get some real business done. I understand we don't have a modern art docket now, but you know, we still have a bunch of stuff that we'd like to get input from the public. And if we have to go to Gaudet, so be it. Let's go to Gaudet and, and open it up and get it done.
Let's go to the football field, right out there.
Yeah, no, agreed.
Any other comments? You have a motion to?
I did have something else that I wanted to ask, and it may, may or may not be, but I was going to call Ron and/or Peter. Can you correct me on relative to the, first of all, I believe Plumby's and the Neon Place, whatever it's called, they look tremendous. They look great. I love what they're doing in that, on those corners. We, one, a couple of things, I look at the Plumby's building, the faux windows, if you will, or the simulated windows, and also the speed bumps. Did that go to the zoning board and they did not take those recommendations? I know the false windows are there, but the speed bumps are not in. I know they're getting ready to open, but I'm not sure if that happened at zoning, that they, that they passed it at zoning without those. But the windows, to me, Ron, they're there, but there's white, they're painted white.
Those, those are the windows that were presented to the planning board.
I understand, but I believe that the, the panes should be black, no?
Well, what was presented to you identified it as being white. So I, I don't disagree that it would, might be better if it was black, but that's what they presented.
Because it really looks, it looks silly, frankly.
As far as the speed bumps go, I, I can check the zoning board decision. I don't know what, if anything happened with that. And it also is, the project's not done yet either. So.
Right, I understand.
I, I don't recall the zoning board eliminating any of the traffic recommendations that came up from the planning board. My recollection is that they adopted them. So it may simply be that those, that they're going to wait until construction is complete so that the construction vehicles aren't being impeded by, by the speed bumps.
Right. I think the buildings look great. I think we did a good job there.
I, I agree with, with Bill, you know, like, when, when I remember when we were discussing those windows, that they were going to be made to look like real windows, you know, and certainly having them all white doesn't make them look like real windows, you know?
They spent the money to put in the, the faux, you know, the, you know, the, the simulated trench frame, and they left out the most important part, the window or the, the black glass, you know?
Of course, there was somebody that made the comment that those things could be made to look like real windows, you know? They certainly don't look like real windows right now.
It looks silly. It looks silly. It really does. It would look great with, with black in those windows or plexiglass. It would look great.
Something like that. Yeah, right.
Anything be done with that, Ron? Can we talk to the building inspector?
I, well, he's the, the developer's required to do what was approved. So I can go back and confirm the plans that were approved. But at this point, we can't go and ask him to do something different.
Yeah, I, yeah, agreed. I, I mean, I, I think it looks silly, but hopefully they'll, they'll see that. I can imagine it's probably just a matter of basically scraping the paint off or pulling off the plastic that's there. I think maybe, I don't know, but I think it looks silly. Other than that, it looks great.
Ron, could you check those plans and let us know?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments from planning board? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
BJ made the motion?
Second from Art.
Second from Art. Mr. Perrick?
Aye.
Mr. Chumo?
Aye.
Mrs. Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Fenton?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Bye-bye.